All right, we'll go ahead and we'll call the meeting to order. Is there any public to be heard this evening?
None present.
So we did have someone signed up, but apparently they did not attend, so. We can, we're good to move on.
Okay, great. So Alberto, the agency funding presentation.
Yeah. So I'm gonna, I have it ready to go. And give me one second. I do want to tee it up with, this is, we had this conversation. At the end of the funding. Process last year, right, where I, we talked about the fact that we had so much more in requests. Even after Christina and I did some pre-screening around agencies and what they were asking for that weren't necessarily in line with our, our overall policies or all priorities. And so what I've done in the meantime, as we've been working on the application, I also did, I thought about what are things that we can do? And so I have some, I have some options for you all to consider. What's not on there, and I did tell Kim. When we started was, you know, option, one option that we can do is to do nothing. And we can, we can look at again when we, when we, when we close the application and see how many applicants we get. I just wanted to have us prepared to think about things. So I, I'm just gonna go over this presentation and then we can talk a little bit about the options, or if you all want to come back with different options, that's fine. But I just wanted to make sure that we had this conversation with the board so that we can know, so that you can see the things that we've been thinking about as staff. And of course, we're always open to suggestions from the board. Alright, so let's go ahead and get going here. So again, context is you can see, and from this chart. The, just, the 2024 cycle was, the only closest one was 2020. And it was still, you know, $400,000 less basically in request than 2024. And, and the only reason that was different was, I think the big thing to see is, if you look at the amount requested is 1.38. And in 2024, it was 2.46. And this is, and that number doesn't include the agencies that we screened out because we didn't feel that they were aligned with our, it would have been higher. If, if we would have screened through some of those agencies. So just a reminder how it works, we work, we contract with the agencies, we fund whole wide variety. We use the 2020 human services assessment, we are working with Molly and their team to get ready for the 2025 con plan where we're gonna do another human services assessments. Those are our areas. And you, we help coordinate this process with you, make, and we make funding recommendation city council approval, so you recommend they approve. So here's just really quickly our current application process, we know that we're looking at all these things. We have a formula, a formulaic allocation process based on your average scores and, oh, here comes Robert too, good. Your average scores and the staff scores and the total score determines the percentage of the requests to be funded. And then here's our priorities, we can change them again this year, that doesn't have to happen right now. We can talk about that in June or July, but here is our, those are priorities that we have. The board resets base funding to zero, in other words, we don't consider historical funding, that's, that was a decision that was made in 2019, I think, or 2018. In the past, we did consider historical funding, in other words, you typically couldn't get much more than what you, what you were usually to getting. So. So, based on the reality that I don't think, well, I guess it's not a reality, but is, I'm concerned, or Christina and I are concerned that we're not gonna see a drop in requests, right, that the need is so great. But I can tell you that I talked to Harold today after our meeting, Christina, or before our meeting. And we are gonna be in a tight budget year. As a city, so that's just, I mean, we just got our, 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 my April, our April financial report from our city financial officer, and there's a lot to be concerned about for 2025. And so I don't think increasing, I mean, you could always ask for it, I've just been told that you know, increasing from 3% to anywhere else is probably not gonna happen just because of the tightness that the city itself is finding itself in. Christina, anything else to add to that?
No, I think that, you know, we talked a little bit about it, as people were locking in, is that, you know, we know that we have some staffing challenges, we know that we also need to fix those. And that's really the same message that we have gotten just across the board, it doesn't matter what kind of, what kind of recommendation that we're making, whether it's, you know, for new staff, new additional programming. You know, for frontline programmers, we just know that those dollars are very limited. And so it's, you know, not unique to this situation, but I think just across the board is what we're hearing.
Yeah, so unfortunately, that puts the board and staff in hard, in a hard position of having to make some tough choices, right? And that's not, that's never fun, having to make those tough choices. But we gotta make them. So here are some things that I'm, that I, I'm just, they're not recommendations, they're just options. And if you can think of others, I am, you know, we are always willing to hear. So one, we could say, you know what, we're just, in fact, one of the agencies that lost money this year said, well, why don't you, why do you all do so good of a job of getting the word out there and getting new people applying? Could you guys just stop getting the word out there? Well, we could, we could say we're not gonna accept any, any, any new applications. Boulder County is doing it this year, they're only continuing funding the ones they funded last year. So we could do that, we could say, you know what, we're not gonna accept any new applications, we're just gonna, we're just gonna accept the applications from the ones that have applied in the past. Yes, Alejandro.
There it is. Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm working off the phone. I, I, I like that. That very much, no new applications for this year, this year, this upcoming year.
Okay, we could do that.
The other thing that the county, the other thing that the county has done is that they have said that we will not, that they will not fund other government agencies. And so that, that's a, that's a potential, you know, change to, to consider along with, you know, the, the rest of Alberto's list, or anything else, or a combination of.
Right, yeah.
You're saying only, only nonprofits then? And other government agencies, like no Boulder, no?
Right.
And Brain.
Right, right, exactly. Not the same brains that reply to us, but Boulder does apply it.
Right, right.
Right.
Boulder County, right.
I mean, that sounds, that sounds pretty good too. Just to be like a very tight year. If we wanna prepare. And, and the amount of people in organizations that we had applying last year was, was pretty pretty substantial, so. Yeah, that does sound like a good idea as well, like freeze new applications and not funding other governmental agencies. I mean, we're, I mean, we're, we're a city that is like amazing prime real estate, very wet when it comes to like water and, and, and very vast when it comes to land, but I, in comparison to the other cities in Boulder County. Are we not like in the lower when it comes to like money? Bringing in money to the city?
Well, I think it depends, it depends on, you know, what the, what the tax base is and how to, how, how different amounts really are calculated, and so we know that with the, with the median home price in Boulder is much higher, they have different kinds of, of, a different kind of tax base, their council, you know, sometimes directs them to do things differently, and so I think it just depends. But I think that what we do find in Longmont is that it is one of the, you know, it's not as expensive to live in Longmont, and so we do have probably a higher number of low income families that, that I would, I would guess that we are, are trying to serve as compared to, to the median income in Boulder, for example.
Right, and we're really, usually really good with our money too. That's what I've been seeing for years living here, we're better.
We try. We try.
Yeah, I'm gonna just put it out there, it's recorded.
Go ahead, Crystal.
My question is, is did the city manager give an explanation as to like why we're tighter this year versus maybe last year or the year before?
So this year, yeah, go ahead, Alberto.
Well, I was gonna say, well, one, I think so, we're just seeing use tax go down and with the, with cost, end of the first year of Costco, we're seeing our, our sales tax kind of, it's always been, our sales tax has been really, you know, up and up, but it's starting to flatten out a little bit, is what I read in the latest financial report, and, and the financial reports are online. We can send it to you all, if you all want to see the financial reports, they're, you know, we're a city, they're always public. There's a webpage for it. Christina, anything else?
So yeah, we are in a non-appraisal year, and so where we have maybe seen a higher revenue around property tax. We are, it's an off year for us. And so that happened last year, it's not gonna happen, not gonna happen this year. And so I think that's the other piece of, the other piece of it. So yeah, if we just kind of run down the list.
Yeah, yeah, I'll keep going. So yeah, so we, we, we could take down new applications, we could not fund other, other governments. We could, so I, I did create a table, so I didn't, I don't have the name, but these are, on this side, on the side of the slide, all of those agencies are either brand new agencies or brand new programs that we funded this year. 165,000 total that we funded this year in new programs. We could limit it to 10,000 or even 5,000, all the new programs and, and, you know. So that's another way we could do, say, if you're a new program, we're gonna limit you to 5,000, if you're a program that, you know, that was new last year, you can't receive more than what you received last year type of thing, right, so we would keep all of them at that level, right? We, we could do something like that. If you were funded for the first time last year, you will not receive any more than what you received in 2024. The other thing we could do that would make it maybe a little bit simpler, but it, it would spread the pain a little bit more is instead of trying to nitpick, you know, we don't fund new governments, or we don't, there is a simpler model that I, I, I don't want to tell you that I, it's the one that I like, but we'll get to it here in a second, but it may be a simpler answer to this, and we're gonna get to it in a second. We could also go back to historical funding, here are some examples, I, I didn't put out the agency names, but I put out what they got and what their funds would have been if they had not, if we had done an average of what they have got in the past, or what they could get as a high. Again, that makes it a little bit complicated because we have to go back and some folks don't have, don't have the history that some other folks have. Yeah, Alejandro.
The thing I don't like about historical funding is we're grandfathering in funding and some organizations, and they, and they showed it, displayed it last year during their interview or their board, you know, presentation. They're not changing with the time, and, and that is dangerous water for me, at least.
So, so one thing to say about that, Alejandro, this isn't, this is not mean that we're guaranteeing, so I told every agency that lost funding that they have to remember that this is a competitive process, right? So this just means that they couldn't get any more than their historical average. They could get less if they score, if you all in the, and staff scores them less, they could receive less, they just couldn't receive more. Right?
But won't, won't that like kind of pencil in that amount for them?
No.
For distribution on the others?
No, it wouldn't be, what I'm talking is, this is the highest you can get. If you score low, because the board doesn't, you could get less, it would just mean this is the highest you could get.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, so no, it, it would not pencil anything in other than their, their highest limits.
The max, right, the ceiling.
Yeah, the max, exactly, it would pencil in their ceiling. Now here's the other thing that we could do that may be simpler. So when I did this last year, you can see the percentages, 100, 100, 100%. That was because the board in 2019, 2020 made a decision, say, hey, if somebody scores high, we need to, we want to fund them at 100%. And so what that did this year, where the major cuts, as you can see, were really in the folks that scored enough to get funded, but not enough to get 80%. The board could say, you know, because of the challenging situation, we are going to distribute this a little more evenly, and we're gonna say, nobody can get more than 90%. You know, and then we go down to 60, and then we go down to 40, or we go night, or we go 90, 70, and 50, you know, we could do that. And that would just mean, that would make it, that would make it a little bit easier on, on, on staff. Because it would just be at the end of the period, we don't change anything in the process. We're just recognized that we can no longer fund any agency at 100% because of our, our financial situation, and so we are gonna go down to whatever the board decides, right? Okay, Alejandro?
So basically lowering the bar.
Lowering the amounts of anybody, not the bar, the bar still remains the same.
The ceiling.
Lowering, yes, lowering the ceiling, we're lowering the ceiling from, in the past, the board wanted to fund those that scored high at 100%. This is, this is basically saying, hey, that's not sustainable, we can't do that anymore. So we're gonna start a little lower.
Well, at least this year, we can't do it this upcoming year, I mean.
Right, we can, yeah, we, we've changed it throughout the years, right? It's been different in the past. Go ahead, Crystal.
So, I'm just trying to clarify here.
Of course.
So we're talking about these amounts, is this like in relation to our last meeting about the housing projects? Or is this, this is separate, this is the funding, the, that we did last fall?
Yeah, this is completely the human services funding, the applications that you read, the, you know, almost three, 2. whatever million we have, the 3% of our, our, our general fund budget, basically. And so yeah, this is not connected to housing, the housing program per se.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, good question.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, I mean, I think the board made the, the decision to say we're gonna fund, if they score well, we want to fund them 100%. The board could always say, we can't do that, we're gonna start at 90 or 80% or whatever. Okay, so I think we had Alejandro, then Jeffrey, then Graham.
So like for simplicity, I think this is a very good model. Yeah, just across the board, bringing it down and keeping everything the same.
Oh, did we lose Graham?
So basically, I agree with you.
No, he's still there.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah, I think for, this is probably the simplest, not saying this is what we gotta do, we can, we can be more complicated. But this, what this does do though, is, is the, the pain is spread out more, more evenly. Right, everybody's gonna take a hit, not just, you know, not just the new programs, not just, you know, the government, we, we could keep the government, there's gonna take a hit, everybody's gonna take a hit.
But we can do a combination of this and not take new, new.
We could, we could, we could, yeah.
The freeze on new applications, I think is a very good idea for this year. Yeah, just because of the exponential amount that we got last year, you know, I mean, compared to the year prior and your prior that, you know, I mean, it was kind of did a start of a bell curve there, like, you know, I don't.
Right, yeah. Jeffrey?
Alberto, you mentioned earlier that you just, one of the goals is to make sure the applicants knew what the rules of the game are, and and so if, if you highlighted these percentages, you know, the fact that we're not gonna fund any application at 100%, I wonder if applicants would try and game the system and apply for 120%.
People do that all the time.
Yeah, I don't know if that would, I guess I'm just more concerned it may not work, that people would understand that and just apply for more funding than they actually need.
What we could say is, we could leave it open to say something like, we could give ourselves a way out and caveat, say, if requests are exponentially higher, these numbers may change, and we go down to 70, 60, 30 type, you know, we could give ourselves that out, Jeffrey. If people want to game the system, we're just gonna be like, hey, you know, because of the, because of, so there's ways around that, right? We could just say, hey, because of this, this is what we're gonna do, so, but you're right, that's.
Right, then the intent is to, is to lead with this, right, so that people know what to expect. And so, you know, I think being really clear about if we see exponential, you know, or inflated isn't a good, a good word, but inflated requests, then that would, that would force us to kind of bring those limits a little lower, because the goal is to meet the need in the best way.
I think being clear that we, you know, if, if the board is willing to provide partial awards, I think being clear about that is, would be, you know, useful to an applicant.
Yep. Okay, Graham, and then Kim, and then Crystal.
Yeah, I actually was gonna make the same point Jeffrey just made, that the only way this works is that the organizations don't know we're doing it. If we're nonprofit, I would just up the ask to, to calibrate for this measure myself, so. I do like the simplicity of it, so I, I had a question, clarifying question for staff, is the, is the CFO and city manager saying, hey, we anticipate fewer overall dollars and thereby less for human services, or are they proposing cutting our percentage?
No, they're not gonna cut, no, we, they're, they're committed to 3%. I think it's just the, the potential budget for next year will be more conservative than it has been.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Kim?
I guess I'm reluctant to limit funding for previous awardees, I just feel an equity lens of just allowing everybody equal access, and then we can make the determination of, you know, who's most, you know, arguing their case for those funds. How transparent, go ahead.
So I, I just want to clarify, it sounds like you're against the, putting a, 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 a stop on new applications, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct, I feel like it should remain open, anyone who has interest and is willing to put in the work to apply. Because there's no guarantee that they're going to get an award, that's our, our role. And I do think, I love this lowering the percentage of the awards in conjunction with sharing that there will be no greater amount awarded, like the last year's award, if you're an existing recipient. It won't exceed that, and for all.
Well, that combo, so a combination of, I like that, 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 that sounds good too. I think they're all, okay?
Yeah, I guess that's it.
Okay, Crystal, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so I don't want, I, I, okay, so as far as the new limiting, like, who can apply, I, I agree with Kim, I think everybody should have equal asset access. Just because they're new applicants doesn't mean that they don't have awesome programs, or that they're a new, a new agency. They could be an old agency with a program that works and has data to support it, but maybe they lost their funding over here, and so I, I would be against doing that.
Okay.
And I also don't want to cap it, I think, I think if there's an agency who's kicking ass in the community, excuse my language, but kicking butt and making a change, I, I want to fund them, I want to, I think if they are scoring high and they're doing good, I think they're absolutely capable to, they should be able to get 100%. I think what we need to work on, and I forgot, because I just did research methods in human services, and I thought about our process during this, and I forgot what the exact phrases, and I can send it to you, but it's getting the board on level as far as making sure we're grading the same, right, and, and we're consistent in our grading. So that way, that's where it varies, and, and that's where we need to make sure that that is on top. That way, whoever's getting scored high is because it's, it's truly based off of their performance and not because of, you know, the variability between all board members.
Well, and that's, that's why we did the standard deviation though, we did that standard deviation to kind of even out stuff.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I would recommend that we create some baseline requirements to even get pushed through to be graded and, and, and considered to be awarded, so I think, you know, some of that could look like Alberto, hey, if they don't meet a specific requirement in their financials that, that, you know, that they don't pass to the board, right, they can apply. You guys kind of do the first review, and if they don't meet the minimum qualifications of XYZ, then they don't go to the next level, and so that's, I think that would help weed out a, a lot of the applications and, and help us as board members to really focus on those ones who pass those minimum qualifications, what those are. We could work more on determining what that looks like and how that looks, you know, maybe it's a new organization, you know, if they're new, they have to meet XYZ criteria, right, to show that they're stable. You know, so just throwing some ideas out there. And that's kind of my, my input there.
Okay, alright, thank you. Anybody else? Alejandro?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, that's great. Please, Crystal, um, the thing is that I think already staff has created a screening process to not let in the applications so that the ones that do come through to us are the ones that are truly holding true to the funding and the grant and how it's written for us to fund them. So I think they already done that, I don't know if you guys can
Create more screening of tighter than what it is already? But I think the only, the only concern, to be fair, the only concern I have about getting tired, and it really becomes more about staff and less about the board. That's my only concern about, like, yeah, I could become tighter and say, hey, if you, if you're in the red for two years in a row, we're not even gonna consider you, right? And, and, and then that's, that's my biggest concern, is it, is it, when does it become too much about, I, I want to try and keep, we've always tried to keep a balance between board and staff, right, if they're totally out of, like, for example, you know, we had an agency apply for something that was around transportation, or, you know, and we just, we just didn't feel that that was, it, it, it wasn't, it didn't fit with what we were trying to fund, or we had the Special Olympics, which was great, but they were wanting funding for their, their Special Olympic events. That just doesn't fit with what we're trying to fund, right, we're trying to fund access to, to healthcare. So, so, yeah, but I mean, there are agencies that, that mess up on their financials, like, we could take them out, we typically don't, we just ask them to turn in the right stuff afterwards. I mean, we could, I guess that's my concern, Crystal, is that if we did it, then it becomes a lot more about staff. And, and, and yeah, that'd be my only concern, but we could do it, I, I'd just be concerned about that.
And I think what you're talking about too, Crystal, is fidelity to the scoring rubric, right? And so to make sure that, you know, there's kind of that inter-rater reliability between scores. And so the other thing that we are going to do this year is that instead of Alberto and I reading all of the applications and scoring, we're gonna have subject matter experts from our department read, and so if it is a a youth program that provides mental health services, for example, then we would have a team of clinicians and youth people really look at that. Because I think it will kind of address some of what you're talking about as far as the inner rate of reliability. And Alberto will really provide that, that training. And so that is another one of the kind of controls that we've put, put in. But yeah, I mean, we, we would continue to screen out applications that just weren't a fit.
Yeah, exactly.
And then to the, to the point of like tapping or lowering the ceiling and everything else, I mean, it's not like, you know, I want to fund everybody, I would love to fund everybody 100%, especially if they're doing a great. You know, I want to fund everybody, I would love to fund everybody one hundred percent, especially if they're doing a great job. There's so many nonprofits in town that, forget it, they, they're doing amazing work, I mean, El Comité. Uh, Recovery Cafe, I mean, everybody is just putting in the work and you can see the work happening and, and I wish they could get a hundred percent. But if, if we're being asked to take into consideration a tight year. I mean, we ju- we have to take into consideration a tight year and not every year we can go all. Full-blown one hundred percent, you know, it, it's just what it is. It's unfortunate, but it, it, it is what it is.
I think the other thing is we could, so if this is a model, if we like this one. We could wait until we see what we get to make the decision. Um, because again, what we're talking about here does not impact the application process or anything like that. We just want to know i- i- if, like, like, I, I, I told Christina, I mean, option D is do nothing. And, and, and see where the cards fall and then we can, we can, in October, we can have a special meeting and come back to it. I just wanted to, to, I, I will make sure that people know that we're doing the work and that we're being thoughtful and that we know that what we're facing, so.
Right.
We could just say, leave it as is.
And if we had to put something in the grant guide. Prior to rolling the grants out, that's what we wanted to do for full transparency. Um, for the organizations that are applying, if you all wanted to bring forth a recommendation. Um, that would impact whether people apply for grants or not. Then we wanted to have, be fully transparent and put that into the grant guide so that people wouldn't apply and then. You know, spend all that, spend all that time.
Yeah, Alejandro?
So, in that, in that sense, when you say nothing will change, it's, well, unless we vote to. Eliminate new applications, then. But if we can put like, uh, small clause in the front, like. We're expecting, you know, this twenty twenty-five year to be a tight year financially. Um, i- i- for new applicants, just know that we might not be. Considering new applications, but you can go ahead and apply just in case something changes.
I, I think we could, I think we could, um, you know, if you all decide not to make any changes. Um, and go move forward as is and then, um, make those decisions, um. You know, through our regular process, I think that we can definitely in the grant guide itself. Put some points in there that, that, you know. That, that raise, um, or that, that, that draw attention to, it's a difficult budget year, we've had more. Um, requests than we have funding, um, please be advised that, you know, it's not guaranteed funding, like, we could, we could. Come up with some verbiage that, you know, to that point, Alejandro, yeah.
Jeffrey?
I like that idea a lot, I think we could, I think just providing some facts like that. So the applicant knows that it's a highly competitive year, but it is sufficient to me. I want to, I think it behooves us to remain flexible, you know, uh, um. Because we could get a few, you know, really outstanding applications that warrant major awards. Um, or we may get a bunch of mediocre applications, we, we don't know what we're gonna get yet and so. Um, I think sometimes by remaining flexible. Um, and not being overly stringent with your rules, you allow people to be, organizations to be innovative and creative and come up with some new ideas. And let, let's don't tamper that innovation by having really strict rules. Uh, I think just sharing the facts that it's, it's a competitive year and letting folks know that it may be difficult to secure funding, maybe that's all that we. Are able to do.
That was, that's always an option, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure it was in front of the board, so that you know what's coming, that's always an option, Alejandro.
So we can have these as Plan B, Plan C.
Yes, yes.
And, and I, I, I do, I do like that, um, especially that's, that last statement there, thank you so much for providing that, that. You know, we don't want to stifle innovation, that is true, um, yeah, I'm good with that too.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I would just say, yeah, I agree, I think we can just wait to see what happens, I mean, you never know, we might get more money.
Yeah, yeah, we don't know what the, yeah, I just, again, I just wanted to have this meeting because I wanted to put it in front of the board so that you knew. These are the things that we've been thinking and talking about, uh, I knew that the board could say, we'll just wait, um, so I think with that. Um, I don't know, I, I can't see everybody, so I'm not sure if, uh, I'm gonna stop sharing so I can see everybody, uh, I think we've, um. So, with that, uh, I think Kim, uh, at this point. That we don't really have a recommend, uh, other than, maybe the recommendation or the motion that we seek is. That, uh, staff will, um, add verbiage to the, um. Application guide denoting the tight budget year and the, the high level of competitiveness that may, that may affect. Final awards or something like that.
I think that works.
Can we get a motion for that?
Graham?
Graham, are you motioning or are you, are you gonna say anything else today?
I'm motioning, you just said Alberto, add verbiage to the applicant, package staying at the down year, highly competitive. And make no adjustments to the process.
And I second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Raise your hand, say, I, there you go. Okay.
That's exactly what we were looking at, that kind of direction, and so we wouldn't. Um, you know, since we're not changing anything, we won't take an item forward to, to city council. Since the process really is gonna stay the same and you will go, um, figure it out on the back end, that really, adding the verbiage is a programmatic aspect. And so I don't feel the need to take it to council, how do you feel, Alberto?
I think that's exactly right, that's an operations thing.
Operations, so, perfect.
Yep, I feel pretty good, I, I really appreciate you all tonight, this is. Yeah, a lot of thought went into this and I appreciate the thoughtful conversation and, and getting to where we need to get to, and we're getting done before eight o'clock.
Three minutes or?
All right, so thank you all and we'll see you for the, I think, is June, just a reminder, I think June thirteenth, we're having dinner, right, Brenda, here? For those that can make it or want to come.
Um, I haven't put that out, but yes, that is the plan.
So, uh, we will get, we will get word out about the dinner, uh, so those who can make it and come have, come some dinner with us, a pre-session dinner. That would be great, um, it'll be invited, of course, it's a public meeting. Uh, but of course, you know, I, I think, uh, we'll figure, I think we, we've talked to our city clerk, because, you know, council has dinners too before. Meeting sometime and Brenda's talked to, to city clerk and how to work that out, so. All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Don't, aren't we supposed to have a liaison that's attending our meetings?
Yes, we are, uh, yes, we are, uh, I, I, I don't think he's been able to attend. Uh, our, our meetings, we'll, we'll reach out, um. But, yeah, yeah, we're, we do have a council liaison appointed to our board.
I missed our old one.
Yeah, I know, she was awesome.
It's important that they come sometimes, just so they know. You know.
Hopefully, if you, if you put food out there, maybe that'll. That always, whenever somebody tells me, hey, come, come over to eat, I tend to run to that, so.
Oh, we know that, we know that.
Well, Alberto, I had a question off the record, so once.
I'm still recording.
We can, we can, you, you and I can stay on, so we, we can close the meeting.
Okay.
Do we have to do motion to adjourn? I guess we do.
Yes, yeah.
Who would like to move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, in a second, okay?
A second.
Thank you all, have a good night, Crystal.
Good night, I'm gonna go ahead and stop recording and then, um, if you want.
Yeah, but don't, don't close the meeting, so I'll close the meeting, um.
Right.
Uh, so that, that, if, so I can talk to Crystal and see what questions she has for us.